Good evening, everyone. It is now seven o'clock on Tuesday, March the 28th, 2023. I'd like to welcome you all to Richland County Council's zoning public hearings. This meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, take the roll, please.
Brenham.
Present.
You. McBride. Livingston. Teresa. Weaver.
Here.
Baron.
Here, here.
Walker.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Also, just a couple of housekeeping matters. I spoke with Councilman Pugh, and he will not be in attendance this evening. He's actually traveling out of town on business, and so he would not be present. Also spoke with Councilwoman McBride on yesterday. She indicated that she would attend virtually. I believe she sent an email to that effect today. I think it was a personal matter that prevented her from being present this evening. But I don't see her online, but there's a possibility that she could participate in this evening's meeting electronically. And of course, Councilman Branham is participating electronically this evening as he is away on business, and so that has prevented his presence here this evening. But again, he will be participating electronically this evening per our council rules. Next item on the agenda is item three. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Mr. Price?
There are no additions or deletions from staff.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item four, adoption of the agenda. Any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda? There being none. Madam Clerk, I mean, well, entertain a motion.
Thank you.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five, you know, public hearings. And before we get into the public hearings, again, Councilman Pugh would not be present this evening, but he's indicated that he wanted the two items on tonight's agenda for District Two deferred. That would be items three, as well as item, I think that is item 10. So at this time, I would move to defer those two items.
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. That's non-debatable. So Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham.
Yes.
Livingston. Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
No.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right. First item on the agenda for public hearings is item 5A1. It's case number 22-034MA. The applicant is Larry D. Rump. This is a request to change his zoning designation from office in an institutional district to rural commercial. The address is 8442 Old Percival Road, TMS number R22602-02-02. The planning commission recommends disapproval. Staff recommends disapproval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
I know, Mr. Chair. No individual signed up to speak this evening.
All right, that public hearing is now closed. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Recognize Ms. English?
Thank you. At this time, I've spoken with the applicant as well as the staff, and we have learned that rural commercial is not the appropriate zoning for this area, and we will move to disapprove.
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? And Mr. County Attorney always asks this question. So a yes vote in this instance means disapproval, correct?
That's correct.
And a no vote means approval.
Correct.
All right. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion to disapprove passes.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item A2. This is case number 22-36, 036, rather, MA. Name of the applicants, Anthony and Danielle Timmons. This is a request to change the zoning designation from residential multifamily medium density to rural commercial for three acres. The location is 8350 Old Percival Road, TMS number R19814-03-01. The planning commission recommends approval, five to three, and staff recommends disapproval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, that public hearing is now closed. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize Ms. English?
Thank you. Once again, I spoke with the applicants, and again, this rural commercial does not, is not the appropriate code. And I want to say for both of these, they had positive public input, but at this time, they both understand that rural commercial is not the appropriate zoning code. So we move to disapprove.
Second.
Moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa. Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion to disapprove passes.
Next item on the agenda is item A4. That's case number 22-040MA. The name of the applicant is Mark Meadows. This is a request to change the zoning designation from rural to general commercial for one acre. As the address is 311 Killian Road, TMS number R14781-04-10. The planning commission recommends approval unanimously, and staff recommends approval. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, we have one individual sign up to speak this evening for the project, Mark Meadows.
All right, Madam Vice Chair, this public hearing is now open. Forgot that part.
Okay. If you would come forward, Mr. Meadows. I ask that you state your first and last name, as well as your address. You'll be given two minutes to speak. When your two minute ends, you'll hear a timer go off, but I'll also indicate that your two minutes are up. I'm sorry, Mr. Meadows. Hold on, we can't hear you. Make sure your mic is on.
Okay, thank you. My name is Mark Meadows. I live at 239 Killian Road. This property is owned by Ms. Tammy Corley, and she's asked me to represent her in trying to get this piece of property zoned from residential to general commercial. I think if you look on the map, you'll see that just to the west side of the Walmart driveway, and we feel that the best use of the property would be that it'd be on general commercial. And we'd like to thank the planning commission and staff recommendation. Both have recommended approval for this, and we would ask that the county council also vote to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak this evening.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Public hearing is now closed. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Chair.
You recognize Ms. Barron?
Thank you. Just want to note that Mr. Meadows and Ms. Tammy came out to our town hall meeting and was able to engage in a conversation with the constituents of District Seven. And because of that and the nature of this application, I move to approve this item.
Second. Question. There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 5A5, case number 23-001MA. The name of the applicant is Heather Bounds. This is a request to change the zoning designation from light industrial district to residential single-family high density for 77.78 acres. Location is Hardscrabble Road, R17301-02-01. The planning commission recommends approval unanimously, and staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, we have one individual sign up to speak this evening. It's the applicant, David. I believe it's Brands. If you would come forward, state your first and last name, as well as your address. You have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name is David Brandies. My address is 1301 Gervais Street, Columbia, South Carolina. Appreciate your opportunity to come. I'm an engineer with Yale Robinson, representing Ms. Bounds. We were working with this particular client on three developments in Columbia, so they are establishing a footprint here. So we do appreciate that. We appreciate Ms. Baron hosting us at the public information meeting. We thought it went very well. There's a lot of good conversations. One of the big things everyone is interested in is traffic, as anyone would be interested in a development. The current level of service for the area in front of us is a Level A, the highest that you can have with the level of service. But we'll be, obviously, any sort of work we do, we'll have to do a traffic study, we'll have to get permits from SCDOT. We'll have to work with the staff on making sure that we have the smallest impact as possible. Our preliminary look at this is homes around $300,000. We're looking at considerably less than the maximum density. We would put less than, you know, somewhere around 200 or so homes on the property, which is considerably less than the zoning would allow density-wise. We also have significant amounts of wetlands and floodplains, as well as easement across the property. None of the homes will impact any of the wetlands. None of the homes will impact any of the floodplain. We will not build in the floodplain. And with that, I appreciate your opportunity to come in front of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that signed up to speak.
Public hearing is now closed. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Chair.
You recognize Ms. Barron?
Thank you. Along with, you know, Mr. Meadows, Mr. Brandies, and his team did come out to our town hall meeting. And we had lots of good conversation. And as noted, that of course, District Seven is growing really fast, and there are some concerns about the location. However, given the nature of the product and the willingness for the applicant to continue to keep the community engaged throughout this process, as well as keeping myself engaged with this process, I'd like to move to approve this one.
Second.
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 5A6, case number 23-002MA. Name of the applicant is James Stembridge. This is a request to change the zoning designation from planned development district to residential single-family low density, 4.01 acres. Location is 110 Jacobs Mill Pond Road, TMS number R25810-03-08. The planning commission recommends approval unanimously, and staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, we have one individual that signed up to speak this evening, James Stembridge. It's Stembridge. So that is the only individual that signed up to speak, and he has waived his right to speak.
Thank you. Vice Chair, that public hearing is now closed. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize Madam Vice Chair?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 5A7, case number 23-003MA. Name of the applicant is Wesley Slice. This is a request to change the zoning designation from rural to general commercial. That's approximately, well, four acres, actually. Location is 1,000 West Shady Grove Road, TMS number R02600-06-16. The planning commission recommends approval unanimously, and staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Wesley Slice. If you would come forward and state your first and last name, provide your address. You have two minutes to speak.
Thank you all for the opportunity to talk. My name is Wesley Slice.
Hold on just one minute, Mr. Slice, we'll make sure we can hear you.
Gotcha. My name is Wesley Slice. My address or the address is 730 Elmwood Avenue in Columbia, South Carolina. I am with All South Federal Credit Union. We are representing the current owner of the property. We are looking to purchase that and would like to change the zoning from rural to general commercial. We do realize we've actually met with Mr. Branham, as well as gotten letters from adjacent property owners who are in approval of our rezoning, as well as reached out to neighboring HOA folks to let them know what we are doing as well. There, we are in a Richland County, the Neighborhood Activity Center is part of this area, which financial institution falls within that and works very well within that. And the neighboring areas around us are general commercial and M1 designation. So we feel that it fits within the neighborhood that we would like to go in. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals signed up to speak.
Now closed. So at this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Branham.
You recognize Mr. Branham?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, and just very briefly, this is my first vote on a property in my district. So just want to state the basis for it. Mr. Slice did a nice job of laying out some important factors, and appreciate him meeting with me and, again, just indicating that they intend to build a branch of Credit Union there at the corner of Broad River Road and West Shady Grove Road near the peak exit on I-26. Definitely did my due diligence on this. There's currently abandoned buildings on that site that are very aged, dilapidated. M1 and GC properties are located on two sides, and then on the third side of the parcel, there's a church, as well as more GC. The fourth side, property owner consented in writing to the rezoning request. I also spoke with residents from two nearby neighborhoods. No objections were voiced. And so just as a general comment for now, I am kind of watching that West Shady Grove Road as a bit of a line of demarcation for non-residential development as we move away from the peak exit interchange there on I-26. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any further discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 5A8, case number 23-004MA. The name of the applicant is Carlos Hart. This is a request to change the zoning designation from residential single-family medium density to general commercial for 0.31 acres. The location is 711 Frost Avenue, TMS number R07614-01-10. The planning commission recommends approval unanimously, and staff recommends disapproval or reads denial on my agenda. So this public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
It's Mr. Chair, Carlos Hunt. Sorry, Carlos Hart. If you would, please state your, come on down. If you would, state your first and last name. Yep, that one works. Your first and last name for me, as well as your address, and you'll have two minutes to speak.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carlos Hart. I'm at, I live at 203 Steeple Drive. The property in question is 7011 Frost Avenue, as you guys already know. I appreciate the planning committee, commission approving unanimously, and we're just hoping to get this approval for the, for this parcel of our property, because it adjoins a property that I already own, and it is also zoned general commercial. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that signed up to speak.
Public hearing is now closed. Mr. Livingston, you recognize? Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 5A9, case number 23-006MA. The name of the applicant is Ross P. McClary. This is a request to change the zoning designation from planned development district to rural. It's three acres. The location is 11447 and 11451 Garner's Ferry Road, TMS number R35200-09-10 and 38. The planning commission recommends approval unanimously, and staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair.
Right. That public hearing is now closed. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize Ms. Newton?
I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion?
If I may, it's, just say, it's a delight to have someone asked to have their property zoned back to rural in my district. So thank you.
Well, noted. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 5B1. It's a text amendment, amending the 2015 Richland County Comprehensive Plan, putting the pieces in place by incorporating and adopting the Lower Richland Tourism Plan into the Comprehensive Plan, which is located on page 87 of your packet. So at this time, entertain a motion.
Here, I move to.
I'm sorry.
I just want to state for the record that no one signed up to speak for this item.
You know what? Madam Vice Chair, thank you for that correction. I got ahead of myself. That public hearing was now open. No one is signing to speak. That public hearing is now closed. So Ms. Newton, you're recognized.
I think Mr. Price wants to be recognized.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I believe that when the sign up sheet was placed, that we did not have one for this particular action item for county council. I believe we did have one. We made one, but I'm not sure if we presented it to the, to those who may have wanted to speak on this.
Folks here, sign up to speak.
There's, there's some, I believe, during Tim was to sign up to speak.
Tim was to sign up, did not sign up.
Yeah, the sheet wasn't there during the time when they came in.
Open the public hearing. How many people we have, too? Person.
Yeah, okay. If we could, I just need you to also fill the sheet out for the record. But I don't have your name, but if you come on down to the mic, and if you would state your first and last name, as well as your address, and you have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. I did intend to sign it. It wasn't there. My name is Jennifer Manke. I live at 320 Clearview Drive, Hopkins. And I would like to thank you for coming to this night. This thing that you're about to talk about is what I've been working for since high school. When, before, it was a national park, before it was a national monument. We, I mentioned before, we went through our drawers at home and got all our keys out that we didn't know what they belonged to, and we mailed them from Sumter High to the State House and said, "You're the key to saving the swamp." And this night may be close to the end of that process, because the Lower Richland Tourism Plan is to support our national park that we've worked very hard for over the years. And I would like to offer any of you who would like a personal tour, that I will take you, because I think a lot of people in this area do not go there. I often go to the park before I speak, and I report on the license plates. Last week, there were 39 states represented. I'll admit, they may have been in spring break, but I don't think so. And that was including that part, some of the park is still flooded, or some of the bridges still aren't working. But there were 39 states represented there. That's a lot of money that's coming into our area, and I would love the wonderful people that I've met over time through the sewer project and into the zoning issue that we're working on now. I've met some wonderful people in that area, and I look forward to the businesses being owned by those people. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes all individuals that signed up.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. The public hearing is now closed. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? You recognize Ms. English?
Thank you. I want to thank Ms. Min. Everyone that's just been fighting for this. I grew up right down the street, and I have toured it before. It was a national park. I've toured it after it was a national park, and it is a source of pride for me, just living that close and being able to be a part of that and seeing it come to fruition. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that's been working with that. Thank you.
Newton, you're recognized.
Well, Ms. English took many of the words out of my mouth, so I'll say echo. And just as a reminder to our colleagues, that what we're doing tonight is accepting this so that it can be included in the comprehensive plan, so that as we move forward, making future zoning decisions, we can take into account the protection of the Congry National Park and our desire to support businesses who can support that area. So thank you, everyone, for your support. I know this is gone to committee, to council, to the planning commission, back to us. And so thank you to all the community members who have worked for it, but also thank you to our council members for recognizing the importance. So thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is item six, adjournment. I will gladly entertain a motion.
There's already a motion.
We didn't vote?
No.
No, we got a.
In our hearts, we voted.
I thought we voted on this. Okay, Madam Vice Chair, please take the vote. My mind is elsewhere.
Brenham.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Theraisho.
Yes.
Ber.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
A resounding yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right. Next item on the agenda.
Move to adjourn.
Item six adjournment. That is non-debatables. So Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Theraisho.
Yes.
Ber.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, we are adjourned.